I'd like to call this regular meeting in the German Township trustees to order.
Could you all rise for the pleasure of Jesus?
My pleasure to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and in his whole, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Heaton, can we have the roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
All my present.
I go next with visitor comments. First, we're going to have Julie Smith, who's here to represent Sunshine in a Bag, just to say a few words about that.
Thank you, everyone. I think I know everybody here except Mr. Chief of Police. Nice to meet you.
Julie, could you give your name and address, please?
Okay, so that's a formality. My name is Julie Smith, 511 West Market Street here in Germantown. And this is my cohort in crime. Maybe I shouldn't say that with the police chief there. Angie Smith, no relation other than sisters in the Lord. Angie, what, 10, 12 years ago, is the one who came up with this premise for feeding the Valley View students in need of food for over the weekend. And with the beginning of the school year in the fall, it will be our 13th year of providing this. And it is 100% volunteer, 100% faith mission-based project, both with monetary donations or food items. And I just wanted to give credit to the parishioners at St. Augustine Church. This past year, they provided our students with small cans of veggies for the little kids and the big cans of veggies for the big kids. And they provided $2,212.51 of those items for us. I just talked with Mary Hithol, who's spearheaded that at St. Augustine, and she says they are ready to go in the fall when we are. So we are so thankful for that. And then the German Town Methodist Church has been a staunch supporter for us from the get-go, both providing the peanut butter and jelly that we give once a month to the children at the end of the month, and also in monetary donations from the various Sunday School groups. I think Mark's men's group and then his wife's Sunday School class have given us nice monetary donations. For those of you who might not be aware of the program behind me here, we have provided food, 10 items of food for the weekend. We packed two bags of food every, the first and the third Tuesday of every month at our church, the First Church of God, for the students in need of food for over the weekend. As I mentioned before, this fall will be our 13th year of doing this. And we could not have done it without the support of the community. We thank everybody who has helped us in any way. Nobody receives any money. It's 100% volunteer. And no one receives any money. It's, you know, all donation of time and goods and money. We do pack 10 different items, and I will mention those to you. And we try and get the individual servings of everything for those students who might have to fend for themselves over the weekend. So we do the mac and cheese. We do the peanut butter crackers. We do the Chef by R.D. SpaghettiOs. We do the good old chicken noodle soup, pudding cups, popcorn, the individual boxes of cereal, pop tarts, and either Rice Krispy Treats, fruit rolls, or the Capri Sun drink. Now, this past year, we had four students who have allergies. And we were fortunate. It made it simple for us. All four were lactose intolerant. So for those students, instead of like anything with milk or cheese, we gave the little cans of the Vienna sausage, and then we gave the fruit cups. And we substituted that. And then for those students also, we give the completes meals that do not have any milk or byproducts in it. And those are pretty expensive if they're not on sale, $2.65 each. And inflation has really hurt us. At the end of the school year, a year before, our jars of peanut butter at Kroger, which we prefer, it's a good quality product, $1.79 a jar. This year, $2.29. $0.50 a jar increase. I have been working with the Kroger manager at the Moraine Kroger, and he has agreed to give us their peanut butter at a dollar a jar. So right there, there's a $1.79 savings. The figures that I'm going to quote to you are last year's figures. So as you all know, I don't know if any of you do the grocery shopping at your house, but you go to the store this week and last week, loaf of bread was what, $2? This week, it's $2.25, whatever. So it's hurting us all. It's especially hurting us as we try to provide for these students. So Angie and I worked on these figures last week together. It is costing us $7.74 per student, times four weeks, because we do pack twice a week, two bags worth each time. That comes out to $30.96 per student. Add the $2.25 that we give to the students for the peanut butter, provided this gentleman, the program Moraine store, will continue letting us purchase the peanut butter at a dollar a jar, plus the dollar and a quarter that we purchased the jelly spread from our local Dollar Tree. That very last packing of the month, we give the jar, 16-ounce jar of the peanut butter, and I think it's 12 items, squeezable jelly. And that's $2.25. So add that to the $30.96, $33.21 a month per student. That times nine months. Now, this year, we hope to start in September. Years prior up to this time, we have started in October, because in September, that first full month of school, the children are bombarded with paperwork to come home, go with them, and get permission signed for this, that, and the other thing. So this year, we work with Kevin Phillips. He's our coordinator at Valley View. And we're hoping that we have enough parents signed up to go to nine months, starting in September. At that figure of $33.20 a month per child, times nine months, that's $298.89 a year per child. You multiply that times the 174 students we served at the end of this school year and all year long last year, $52,006.96. So any help at you folks can give us, as you've done in the past, will be greatly appreciated. And Mark has seen these figures, but I just wanted to pass these out to you, because as usual... Excuse me. For these students, and packing two weeks' worth of food at a time, these pictures are pictures of the tables that we put the food on every two weeks. That's what our supply room looks like right now, bare shelves. And in the fall, when Angie starts ordering and going to Sam's Club and Walmart and Costco and every place to get the best buy of what we need, those 10 items that we stock all the time, it's over $3,000 to fill those shelves again. So those pictures kind of indicate to you what we're talking about every month. Does anyone have any questions?
So basically, we appropriated $2,000 in our budget coming out of the Fouts Fund to be able to afford Sunshine. When can we release that?
All we need is a resolution to approve spending the $2,000. If you want to do that right now, it'll be Resolution 45. While you're writing that down, let me ask Mrs. Smith a question. Both Mrs. Smiths a question. Because my church, as you mentioned, we do a lot of peanut butter and jelly.
Yes, sir.
You're probably getting better pricing than what our members are getting. Would it be better for us to collect funds, give you the cash to buy it at a dollar a jar or a dollar an order? Should we continue to buy and stop that and then bring it to you?
Either way, Mark, I need to get Mr. Neil Gannon, who's the manager at that Moraine store. He gave me a verbal commitment that when we start packing again in the fall, that he will continue letting us have that dollar per jar price. So far, all I've got is a verbal commitment. I'd like to get something in writing. So either the cash or collecting the peanut butter and jelly would work. We accept anything.
Obviously, our people aren't going to go in and talk to the manager.
No, no.
Or what's ours to bring to you.
Right, right.
Okay, well, I'll mention it to our church.
We would have better buying power if I can get him to commit in writing to continue pricing the peanut butter at a dollar a jar.
Then you're using Dollar Tree for the jelly?
Mm-hmm. Dollar and a quarter. If they don't go up, I don't know how they're, how much longer they're going to be, you know, called the Dollar Tree. Most everything's a dollar and a quarter now.
I'd just add that you guys do an awesome job, and it's greatly appreciated, because working at the school, and I used to skim delivery, but you guys do it differently now, I know.
We have fun. We have fun going it. We laugh and joke and carry on, and the more the merrier.
Yeah, but you guys do it.
A little bit before chance, the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and provided how many volunteers we have to pack, we're done before noon.
Yeah. Well, you guys do an awesome job. And from my perspective, definitely the board we have now, we're happy to support you.
And we are so grateful. Thank you so much. We do accept individual monetary donations.
Absolutely.
Keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-45 to donate $2,000 to the Sunshine in a Bag charity.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution?
I think it's a no-brainer.
You want to put in the resolution?
It has been every single time they've come and asked for it.
Sorry?
Fouts Fund?
Yes. Thank you.
Of the Fouts Fund. Yeah.
Well, we all kind of know that, but we do need to actually say that. Thank you very much. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Stubbs.
No, I was just saying, I think that the board here, except for one time with former members, has been very supportive of what you guys do. So I know I am grateful, and I know I've seen the kids, and I know they're grateful as well. So definitely greatly appreciated.
You'd be surprised. We are only reaching about 38 every year. I chat with Terry Lewis, Secretary to the Superintendent. Things settle down to get the number of students that are eligible for the free reduced lunch program. This past year, out of, I think, the support 398 students, 654 of them are eligible for that program. It's carried in Little Germantown. The need is there.
Absolutely.
It's on Ed Farman's.
Yep.
Thank you again.
Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-45 is adopted. Mrs. Smith, I will mail a check to the church.
Okay, we're done.
Julie? I'll mail you a check.
Thank you. The check will be in the mail.
Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Heard it talk to me about the zoning commission issue. I'm going to put that in new business at the end. So are there any other visitor comments?
I can give you a JED report?
Sure.
All right. Our Keener, that we view JED treasurer, no address.
I'm going to put your address in.
Thank you. So we did finally get a, have a JED board meeting on the 26th that was delayed multiple times. Won't go into that. So I just want to give kind of a synopsis of what's been collected for the year. So it's so far for the year, $70,051. And I will give Mr. Heaton a copy of this.
Thank you.
$70,051 total for the year. We've had a ton of expenses so far this year. We've had $15 in bank fees out of that, and the liability insurance for the board was $2,245. There. What? The liability insurance? Yeah. The, so as everybody remembers, we had set aside money for what we refer to as special projects. So I mean, Mr. Heaton, I was involved in the Performing Arts Center, so we gave them some money. Currently, in that special projects fund, which also is money held back for like erotic fees and things like that, there's $23,572. So we're in pretty good shape there. Refunds, in case somebody says you withheld this money from me, and you shouldn't have been withheld, and that is required by the contract to hold back some money for that. We have $7,536 in that fund. We're withholding 5% of everything coming in. So far, life to date in the JED, I've paid out $36 in refunds. So Mr. Steivers did go and review the contract, and it looks like we can reduce the amount we're withholding and also take the $7,500 and allocate it back. So that'll go actually back to the entities then. And the important number is what has German Township received so far this year. And Mr. Heaton, I believe you found a check under your door for $15,318.
And 37 cents.
And there's still $1,700 that, we had money that came in after I was doing the checks. So there's still another $1,700. Anyway, that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Again, the, what I talked about, as I attended the meeting too, 21% of the collections go into the special projects through the end of this year.
Through the end of this year, yes. Correct. Yeah. So we will be reducing that accrual big time. So, yeah, I don't want to go, I mean, hopefully, don't want to give the impression that, yeah, we're just going to go and spend that 23 grand, because it will. Projects coming up. And I'm sure we will, yeah, once everybody gets settled in. So, yeah. That is about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Very much. And it's my pleasure to serve.
All right. If no other visitor comments, let's go to the fiscal officer's report.
Let me turn my camera on. Okay, good evening again, everyone. I'll start out, as I always do, with the minutes from the last meeting, June 10th. Are there any corrections or additions?
The only thing I saw, I think it was the first or second page, it spelled cannabis in it. It's supposed to be C-A-N-A-B-S.
Hey, anything else?
Yes, yeah.
Glad that you read them. I appreciate that. Any other changes? If not, could I motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the 610-24 regular meeting. That's correct.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Also giving you the June financial reports. As always, you get the fund status at the end of the, end of June. You get the year-to-date cash summary by fund, the month-of-June cash summary by fund, the June receipts, as well as the June payments. And I have two items I want to note. First one is exactly what Mr. Keener just talked about, receipt number 170 for $15,318.37 on the Valley View Joint Economic Development District. And that is our second income tax payment we've received this year. Back in January, we also received $5,024.45. And receipt number 171 for $36,628.79 from Valley View Local School District is the second of two payments for the 2023-2024 of school resource officer services. Are there any questions about the financials? Now, could I motion to approve them as well as the payment of all the June bills?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the June financial reports, authorize the payment of June bills for warrants 50774 through 50782, vouchers 468 through 552 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. On June 28th, I went up to the Board of Elections, and I did file the 4.0 mil fire EMS levy with the board, and that levy will appear on the November ballot. Following your approval at last month's meeting, I also forwarded your resolution supporting Ohio's celebration of the United States Semi-Quintennial in 2026. Sent that up to the state. We received back our official designation as the state's newest America 250-Ohio community. I plan to attend the August Parks Board meeting to discuss their participation in the event planning. This event is going to be jointly sponsored by the township, the city, and the Historical Society of Germantown, each entity having pledged $1,000 as seed money to begin planning this event. Sent a response to Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keith waiving a hearing concerning the township's 2024-2025 tax budget and/or inside millage, and that would be at the county's Budget Commission meeting on August 29th. We send this waiver annually to the county. If anyone wants to attend that meeting, either in person or virtually, I do have the information. You can reach out to me. I still now receive the draft report from the auditor states to 2022-2023 agreed upon procedures reviewed earlier this year. I continue to be told by them that the review of our report is being delayed due to a heavy workload in the auditor's local office. Once the final report is received, it will be made available on our township website. As you are aware, the township's $60,000 grant request for the recently completed Twin Creek erosion project was included in the state's capital budget bill and was recently signed by the governor. My understanding is that the Office of Budget and Management will ask all grant recipients to confirm project information through a secured grant system starting sometime later this month. I'm hopeful that the fact that the township and city have already completed and paid for the project will not preclude us from receiving the funds. If received, our 30,000 portion of the grant will be deposited into the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, and then will be available to fund other projects. And the other 30,000 will be given back to the city for them to put back and wherever that money came from.
We charge them an administrative fee to give it back to them, because they do it to us.
Are you making a resolution?
I was just asking a question.
It's not on my radar to do it unless you instruct me to do so.
Not at this time.
I understand.
Just proving a point.
I understand your point. Okay, moving on. Also talking about the ARPA fund. At last month's meeting, you adopted Resolution 2024-42, which authorized use of the general fund to pay $27,643.25 to update eight portable police radios and replace five police cruiser mobile radios. At the time, you agreed that funding would be changed tonight to use the ARPA funds for this non-budgeted project. So the first thing I would suggest that you do is rescind Resolution 2024-42, using a new resolution, which will make 46.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-46 to rescind Resolution 2024-42.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? If not, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-46 is adopted, which will rescind Resolution 2024-42. And now I would suggest that you adopt the ARPA resolution, which I sent to you and you have, should have in front of you. Number, be number 47.
I don't need to read the whole thing.
I do not think so.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Resolution number 2024-47, authorizing expenditure from the American Rescue Plan funds. Whereas the Board of Trustees has identified a project which, in the judgment of the board, qualifies as a permitted use of the ARPA funds in direct support of government services, which consists of the following: update eight police portable radios and replace five police cruiser mobile radios. Now therefore be, it is hereby resolved by the board that the township elected to the use of standard allowance by way of Resolution 2022-16 and its presumption of revenue loss due to the public health emergency and to use amounts authorized herein to fund government services. The project is hereby authorized to shall they pay from the ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $27,643.25. Project described herein serves the objectives of the act by providing services traditionally provided by a government. According to the project, it is in the best interest of the township and is deemed a priority for the community. No obligations paid under the authority of this resolution were incurred prior to March 3rd, 2021.
Sorry. I thought you were done.
I know.
Okay.
Those loose.
I will note that this is dealing with updating eight police portable radios and replacing five police cruiser mobile radios. Is there a second to the resolution? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-47 is adopted. As with all purchases using ARPA funds, the federal guidelines require us to have a contract addendum signed by the contractor. Chief, will you handle that for us? And here is the addendum you will use.
Thank you.
Going way back to August of '21, for the first of several times, you first adopted a resolution to approve a settlement with three large opioid distributors that was negotiated by the Ohio Attorney General for Ohio subdivisions through, through One Ohio, which was a 2019 state local government allocation agreement that was established for future opioid settlements. Then, in April '23, you adopted a second resolution approving five additional opioid settlements. We recently received notice of another proposed settlement for opioids, this time with Kroger Company. So I would like the trustees to give me authority to sign this newest settlement, and we will use Resolution 48.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-48, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to sign a national opioid settlement with Kroger.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-48 is adopted. And with that, I am done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Can we have the police department report?
Sir, thank you. Last month, the police department drove 5,766 miles. We were dispatched on 109 calls for service. We closed 106 cases and followed up 112 cases. There were two arrests, formed 395 business checks, 31 vacant house checks, and 919 occupied house checks. Crashes went down to five. Traffic stops were 21, with a total of 13 citations. We wanted to do this last month, but didn't get a plaque in time. So I'd like to present a plaque to Sergeant Jones and his now-retired K-9 EAGUS. And again, thanks for everything you did, everything you did in putting it together, actually work you did while you...
Why don't we put you in front of the camera, gentlemen?
Right here.
So that everyone can see.
Hold on. Yeah, we can't see what we're doing here.
Wait in the camera. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Throw it on the floor first thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to publicly thank residents Gerald, or I'm sorry, Jerry and Cheryl Frame for assisting with their neighbors on June 19th, the house fire on Single Road. And they came over and put their kids and helped take care of their kids while the fire was going on. And that's just, that exemplifies the kind of residents that we have in Germantownship. And I just wanted to give a personal thanks publicly, publicly to them. Germantownship Police Department was invited to participate in the Fourth of July in the Penn State Parade. And we represented very well. We had three cruisers in it. I think that's most we've ever had in a parade down there. So we're happy to be there and happy to represent the township. This is one big community. And like I said, we were thrilled to be there and participate. And then I had one thing that we need to go into executive session.
We'll do that at the end, if that's okay. We usually wait till the end of your executive session.
You can do it at the end. You may want to still take action tonight.
Yeah, we can do that when we come out at the end. But that way, we're not wasting everybody's time.
I did too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ready to form my report?
So a few things to report on tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on, road department's been busy patching the roads that are be chip sealed under the 2024 chip seal contract. Today, Scott and I placed approximately, it says 50 tons, but Scott told me it was closer to 62 this afternoon. So roughly about 62 tons of asphalt. They, we've still got some more to do. Wanted to give you a formal report on the SRM Butter Street access. I got with Ms. Shawna Close, and we discussed what we had found in the...
The original condition.
The conditions of the conditional use. And Shawna was nice enough to put together a letter. And we reviewed it. She sent it to Mark. Mark got to review it and sent to SRM. And within surprisingly like two days, we noticed that they had stopped using the access of Butter Street. So that is fantastic. Keep that heavy traffic off of Butter Street in the intersection of Butter and 123. Couple other things on my report that I didn't get to put on there. Scott and I completed the installation of a 30-inch culvert on West Friend. And we finished hot mixing it last week. So it is completed. One thing I got today in my email that affects the road department pretty substantially is the 2024-25 salt price for the ice and salt. And to remember, we do our bidding through Southwest purchasers for government, which is basically handled by the city of Dayton, the city of Dayton, Germantown, all local entities. A lot of the local entities contract through this extremely large contract. That's the reason we're able to get the pricing that we get. 2023-24, we were paying $91.05 a ton delivered for salt. And the pricing for 24 and 25 came in at $64.79. So that's a substantial drop in per ton price. So that was fantastic news. Other than that, just we continue to mow the cemeteries when the grass isn't dead. And I wanted to thank Shawna again for taking care of the Air Force One thing and for assisting me with putting together that letter and getting it out as for SRM, because that really made a difference. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Just want to take a minute to thank Shawna and Scott and Jeremy for helping set up the 627 Montgomery County Trusting Association. Thank you very much. It turned out to be a very good event. Sony?
Well, Jeremy just stole my thunder. There's that. First and foremost, thank you to Smarter Writing Mix, actually, for their compliance in that matter. And it was very pleasurable. It was nice. It was nice that they, we didn't have to fight. So thank you to them. Just two permits in June, a remission on Eby Road and an ingrown from Linekeeper. We have our BZA case 2024-04CU. Public hearing tomorrow, July 9th at 7:00 p.m. here. This is for the repair shop at the corner of Boomer Shines, 725. Sent him a letter dating that repair shops are not allowed in Ag District. But he claims that the majority of his business is armed equipment repair, which is a conditional use in the Ag District. So let's see how well that goes. So that public hearing is tomorrow.
I assume he took his sign down?
He did. Eli Schatzel is his name. He's been absolutely a pleasure to work with. He is renting the house. He was told apparently that that was allowed. He did not know any better. As soon as he got the letter, he contacted me, took the sign down, stocked everything, and said, all right, what do I need to do? So he's been great to work with. He wants to make it right and be able to keep his business.
There's a lot less cars there than there has.
Yes. Yes. So we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. The building, painting, and signs, I reached out to everybody. I have not heard back from anyone.
I, I got some information on that.
Okay, well, then I'll let you tackle that in your report. That's all I have for zoning trash. So, as Mark knows, I've been fighting with Runkie because the list that they gave us for what they are charging and my list of bills that were going out did not match up. So I asked Shonda at Runkie to give me the list of the extra properties that they were charging us for. Rather than doing that, she sent me the entire list of properties they were charging for. So I had to compare that to my list. Her list was in order. My system would not alphabetize mine. So I had to go through 27 pages, one by one. And so it took some time. I finally finished that. And there were 24 properties that they were charging us for that weren't even in service. Some of them did not exist. Some of them were just fields. Several were vacant. A couple are now owned by Metre Parks. There were four properties that they were charging us double for. I sent her an email last Friday, or Friday, June 28th, with that list of each and every property and asked her to make that right. I also just received their Runkie invoice. So I emailed her again today and said, I'm not paying this invoice until you make it right and send me a new invoice. There were also 111 properties that I added to our current billing before I sent out the bills this quarter. Most of them had accounts, but had been marked as closed or not an account years ago. I don't know if before me, if that's where someone moved out, it got closed and never, you know, if new owners didn't call in and set that back up. I don't know what the deal was. But I went through and reactivated 111 new accounts and sent those trash bills out today. So hopefully that'll be some more income for the, well, not really that we're making anything, but that'll make it right as far as not losing money.
Thank you for doing that.
And hopefully I will hear from Shonda and get an updated bill. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. We've got a trustee reports. Mr. Potter?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to do to talk about tonight. Had a, did not have a pool meeting this month. It was, it was canceled. Park meeting was the parade. It went off really well, very well attended. I think it was the largest parade that we've had that I've been around. It all went well. MMI is still going along as planned, as our schedule. Talking to the church there who does the parking. They're trying to negotiate some kind of, the church to take over parking in the park. And the church let them handle all that because it was such a disaster last year. So I'll have a meeting with them on, on the July 3rd.
Press Festival?
Press Festival, yes. Yes, Press Festival. Yep. I do want to bring back up what we talked about last month as far as Ron Wine and the, and the grant. Progress on that? I don't know if I explained it correctly. All I'm asking for is for Ron Wine to be able to, we've got to give him permission to talk to the, the Public Works people. Same way that Jeremy has in the past with Kramer Associates up in, up in Eaton on some projects that he had done. He's not going to be submitting anything unless it's all approved by the, by the board. It's just, we have to give the Public Works mission to let them talk to him and for him, for them to coordinate stuff. So I would like to have a motion to be able to give him permission to talk to them about the grant for the Little Twin, two locations on the Little Twin, Wally Stivers, and then just north of the Harshberger Bridge.
At no cost to us still.
Any costs will be, will be put, I can't say no cost. It could be a matching funds cost, but we will know all that before anything is submitted. But all his costs will be put into the grant. So if we do not receive any grant, there'll be no cost. The same way that it was with Kramer and Associates on some of the projects that Jeremy had done. That's, understand that correctly, right, Jeremy?
Basically, they build their, they build any engineering costs, any submission costs, any, any costs associated with assembling the, the grant. They build it into the grant. So I know when Kramer did it, it was understanding that if we got the project, we were awarded the project. And, you know, his fees were already built into that. So whatever percent of local match in grant money that got awarded, their engineering and, and their costs were already built into that. So, you know, if, if the grant is not awarded or the board decides not to go forward with the grant, then there's no cost.
Either way, there's no cost.
But if they do decide, you know, it is a favorable
project.
Project, you know, I mean, you say, oh, okay, it's only going to cost us $8,000, $30,000, $40,000 project. You know, that sounds reasonable to go forward with it. And yeah, a portion of your local match will be going to pay for Ron's services. The rest of it will be paid for by Public Works, depending on percentage of match and how much the township's in for it and how much the Public Works is in for. So, but you'll know that before he ever submits it. Because the board will have to sign it before it ever, before it ever goes to Public Works for even review. So.
So we're...
So I don't, I mean...
There are no liabilities.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, any liability, like I said, to allowing Ron to put together a project. Because even if it comes back to, you know, it ends up to even be, if he has to be competitive, if he comes back at like a 50-50 and it's just too much money, then at that time, the board can just say, we'll vote on it. Maybe they vote yes, maybe they vote no. And then, you know, that, I guess, Ron is under that understanding that, that he could go either way. Either they could not get the project or the board...
Or the board did not accept the project. Except the project, even after it was approved.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, that's kind of how Kramer did it. They were under that understanding. You know, if we didn't get the grant, then they didn't gain money.
Okay.
And that just kind of motivated them to do a really good job.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Don't take the motion.
So you wanted us a motion?
I don't think you're not spending any money.
Motion's fine, but I have the document that you presented last month, and I think we should read it. If that's what we're going to use, we'll just change the resolution to motion. So are you making the motion?
Making the motion to allow Ron Wine to, to talk to...
We just read the motion.
You're reading it?
Yeah, I know. You want, you want to read it or... Germantown Trustee, it's a motion. Germantown trustees hereby authorize Ron Wine to serve as their liaison in coordinating with the Ohio Public Works Commission in the local district for Public Works Integrating Committee, prepare applications and communicate with staff and other involved parties relative to funding improvements on Twin Creek, Twin Creek?
Little Twin.
On Little Twin Creek to control stream bank erosion and to protect the township roads from stream meandering and roadbed destabilization. This motion provides Mr. Wine with authority to assist the township as needed to conduct research and prepare funding applications for the approval of the Germantownship trustees in their efforts to protect critical roads and infrastructure from stream erosion. It does not provide Mr. Wine with decision-making authority on any financial or legal matters without express approval of the Germantownship trustees.
Yeah, I'll see.
So what I will do is I will prepare something on our letterhead just referring to a motion being made tonight. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion's approved. Next few days.
The last thing I have is concerning what Shawna was talking about. I did talk to Randy and Ricky King. And I talked to Mike White. The proposal price that they give earlier in the year is still a good proposal. They will still do that at, at that proposal price. One of them was, you have them?
I have two from the King. One is for caulking and painting. And the other is for grinding and tucking the damaged border. There's three papers there.
Oh, but the, the, Mike White did caulking and painting. And they took, compared apples to apples. That's what Ricky and Rick come back and redid their second proposal to match. But the, the best proposal, which I asked Mike White, he wanted to do the grinding. He was not wanting to do it, give us a price for that just out of his league. So Jeremy and me, we all looked at that. I think the best way to do is the grinding and the tucking to be a more permanent, longer lasting thing. So that's the two price. So that's really only have one price of the chains at that, of doing it that way.
It's tough to find people who do tuck pointing anymore. So, and that is actually a good price. I've done tuck pointing in my brick house. Expensive.
So we're going to go forward with this?
I, I...
That would be a resolution.
Excited, I'd drive.
Those are the old ones from April.
I would recommend to do the tucking and grinding as, as Ricky and Randy King posed.
So what? If you want to use ARPA money, we, we'll have to either do it tonight, approve through general fund, let me prepare a document for next month, or we can wait till next month and approve it.
Just wait till next month? We don't have to rescind and...
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes, or not in that big a hurry.
They just can't start until we get approval.
Yeah, I don't think they want to start in this heat anyway.
So. I'll prepare an ARPA. A solution for August.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Mr. Stubbs.
All right, just a few things tonight. The cemetery, if anybody drove by Fourth of July, it was in there. It looks amazing. Keith does a great job and staff. He's been a little shorthanded due to illness with his, with the part-time guys, but they've done a great job keeping up. The audit is about to start shortly at the cemetery. So I have a request since assuming that the grant money for the creek project that we've already done comes through. There's $30,000 that we put in for the, for the, for our portion. The city put in $30,000 to equal 60. I'm going to request that the, if, if the project comes through and they fund it as we expect them to do, that the township consider using the money that we've spent and that we're going to get back for ARPA on the wall project at the cemetery. uh, on the wall project at the cemetery jointly with the city. So we get, we would put half, the city would put half. Uh, the reason for this project is first of all, the money's coming back that we've already spent, spent out. It's a joint project between Germantown and German Township where we were all, we have been, we were willing to work together for it. I think they should be willing to work together for this. It's a safety issue. Um, recently found out that the, the renters, they're, one of their, their, their child gets on the bus there on those steps and stands on that sidewalk and with the wall and the condition it is to wait on the bus, which is, is not great. So I, I'm not asking for anything tonight. Um, I, I brought this up at the cemetery meeting earlier today. Um, and I, I, I asked Bonnie to present it to the city. I, I think the city, this needs to be a joint project between the two of us. I'm not asking us to fund it if they won't. Um, but I would ask for your consideration just for that project going forward. So I'll, you, we can discuss it now or you can think about it. I'm not, there's no hurry to do it tonight. Um, and hopefully the city is willing to go in, in with us on this project.
Yeah, since this all depends on getting the ARPA money.
Yes, it's all depends on that. So, yep, perfect. Uh, let's see, the parade, I attended the parade really well, so including the emergency response right before it started, coming right down, down to the middle of it. So, um, big thank you to the Lions Club for providing the food and serving us for the Montgomery County Township Association meeting that we hosted here. I think it's a good look for our community to have, to have a volunteer group like the Lions Club out there actively, showing what they do to not just us, but people outside the community. So I really appreciate everything that they did.
Thank you. I will pass that on. I know that they enjoyed doing it.
And I, I got a couple of pictures I need to get to you, so maybe we can put them on Facebook, um, of them out front.
Write up a little blur.
Okay, I can, I can do that. I'll, I'll write up a blur for you. I'm getting better at that. So, um, uh, question about a pool board vacancy. The city posted it that it was open to any city resident. Again, again, this is multiple times that they've posted, it, it should be any resident in Germantown or German Township because that's where the opening should be, but they've put it in, in the press again as as just Germantown resident.
I will bring that up.
Yeah. Uh, I had several trash complaints specifically on Friend Road that were brought to my attention. I emailed Shonda at Rumpke as well. Um, I just, basically what they sent me, I just sent it to Rumpke, which I think she appreciated that I wasn't paraphrasing, I just took what they said and I just included it in my email. The driver had apparently had gotten several complaints from German Township, Jackson Township and somewhere else. Uh, so they've been replaced, she had said they had replaced the driver. Uh, so we should look for better service, hopefully.
What was the complaint, may I ask?
Well, they skipped Friend Road completely for a week and then didn't come back. And then multiple people had, they'd skipped someone on Rocky. Uh, they, they had called and Rumpke said they'd send, send someone out within forty-eight hours, didn't do it.
They never did.
They never do.
It's not mine.
So, um, just multiple issues that have been coming in. So we'll have to look into that next time our, our trash, our, our trash contract comes up. I have the executive session, but we can wait till later. So that concludes my report. Oh, sure, sure. Yeah.
First off, the, um, thing with the wall, the cemetery, will the cemetery be contributing to the township and the city? We have.
Yeah. Uh, well, we've got a bid in, it was fifty thousand to do it. So, yeah, the cemetery, we didn't discuss it much tonight, but just seeing where this goes, yes, the cemetery can contribute as well. Yep.
Uh, secondly, with regards to the ad for the pool board.
Yeah.
I just pulled it up.
Yeah.
Um, they have a residency requirement of one year. So obviously they're staying in the city, which we haven't issued. There's no.
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, if they, if they're rerunning it, they don't. I think somebody up here should be helping the city, but you know, you can't have, you have to be here for a year, you know, so on.
Right.
And then just as a side, the Rumpke stuff, I actually got skipped. I don't know, it's probably been four or five months ago. Um, I happened to see the driver on the Miami Township side. So they do German Township first, and then they come around and pick up the Miami Township. Um, you know me, I had to chase to get down. Why didn't you, you take my trash? I'd already thrown my trash bags in the back truck. And this was a brand new driver, and I have an ally based can out there, but I painted over ally base. And his excuse was, wasn't a Rumpke can. I know I was supposed to pick it up. So you may have some of that. I mean, obviously skipping the entire road.
Yeah, right.
Some people. I burdened.
Well, then, then follow up on that. The problem is when they say they're going to be out within forty-eight hours to pick it up, especially Friend Road, any of these roads out here, um, animals are getting into the trash and especially a week into it. And it's just a big, it's a bigger issue than Rumpke's considering it to be. Um, so, um, yeah, hopefully, hopefully we get, they said we were getting a seasoned driver that's been with the company for a while. So hopefully things improve. If not, we'll be communicating with, uh, Shonda a little, a little bit more. So.
Good question. Deb Cross, seven, four, 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 South Stivers. We went to a couple of tournament games this year at Crocher Park for baseball. And both times the restrooms weren't open or weren't open all the time. They said they had to let them rest. When they were open, they'd have to close them and then let them rest and then close them. These were tournaments from, coming from all over Eaton, people working there, Brookville. It's not a good look either time. So, um.
I don't know anything about that, but I'll find something.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Ben. I'll talk to Ben.
And one was the beginning of the season and one was at the end. So I don't know, it seems like there would have been time to fix whatever issue it was, but it's money.
That should be no money to let in a restroom rest. I don't know what that would be.
So that's it.
Oh. Follow up on something Dave was talking about. As far as the money, the grant money that was coming back for thirty thousand dollars, we still, that was already set aside to do erosions on Twin Creek. So we still have the erosion problem on Little Twin. That needs, still needs to be addressed.
Potentially.
Still, it just needs to be addressed one way or the other. You can overlook it if you want to, but it's, it's a, a problem. It's a serious problem. So just, we give that money away. It's already been allocated to erosion. Something to think about.
And not to forget that tonight, you just approved twenty-seven thousand dollars coming out of the ARPA fund. And currently, there isn't that much in the fund. So if we get the money back from the state, some portion of that's going to finish paying off, what you've already approved tonight.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it'll go against either the.
I'm just, he just wanted us to think about something, and I'm just bringing something else up that we all need to be thinking about.
And we can get that discussed.
That's correct.
That's all I've got.
I just got a couple of things. I attended the Fire EMS Oversight Committee on seven, one, twenty-four, and they have five hundred and fourteen runs in twenty twenty-four so far, which is slightly down. Levee Committee will meet on seven, ten, twenty-four to discuss plans for passing the Fire EMS levy. I attended the City of Germantown Council meeting on seven, one, twenty-four. Also, Scott Davies was appointed as the City Law Director to prosecute. So that's all I have. Uh, any old business? So new business, Kurt, would you like to address?
Kurt Jacoby, one, two, nine, five, Harris Road, serving as the President of the Twenty Twenty-three Zoning Commission. Um, I will be speaking both, uh, on behalf of the, the zoning commission and separately for myself, because I've done some additional research outside of what we talked about in the zoning commission. In other words, I'm not trying to talk for anybody, put anything in anybody's mouth. Um, so, uh, thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you on behalf of the zoning commission. As you may know, on June twenty-fifth, after deliberation, zoning commission passed a motion requesting the trustees consider passing a temporary moratorium on expanded aggregate mining in the township, specifically Santa Gravel. The VZA case currently under litigation, the court has been completely excluded from this matter and, uh, and the Z, the zoning commission's request. While working for a full year on regulations for solar farms, that's the past year, it was made very clear that the township residents consider agricultural land and in particular prime ag land a resource to be preserved and protected. In recent months, the issue of expanded aggregate mining has come front and center. Current zoning regulations allow mining on agricultural land as a conditional use requiring approval by the VZA. Some areas of the township would, uh, which may hold rich deposits of aggregate may also be prime ag. I'll hand out some maps, this will. And those are made on there of, uh, area that's being up here.
Thank you.
So Twin Creek Valley has several hundred acres, which may be of interest to aggregate mining companies. May also be true that some northern areas around Little Wing, when Creek have aggregate deposits. That's just a guess. Um, not educated at all. Um, having studied the ORC, Ohio Revised Code, here again, I, at this point, I'm speaking for myself. The articles of the, of surface mining and, uh, and in the townships as well as German Township's Article Forty-five in the Resolution on Extraction of Minerals, I've come to the conclusion that Article Five, Forty-five needs significant update and revision. I've also come to the conclusion, and for many of the same reasons, that like solar farms, aggregate mines may need our consideration for adding performance bonds as a tool for enforcing the eventual cleanup of inactive mines. Along with performance bonds, the township may wish to consider periodic reviews uh, or permit renewed, uh, renewal requirements. We don't have anything like that right now. Uh, back a few years ago, when we were considering regulations, specifically what Article Forty-five was formed around, uh, for the, the white old pit down on one twenty-three, uh, that's where some of this came into play. In crafting the regulations for Article Four, Forty-five a few years ago, the zoning commission didn't anticipate the sale of an aggregate mine. A regulations, uh, based on a one-time conditional use permit on plans and projections by the proposed, by the proposing operator. Now we can inspect, measure, and evaluate current conditions in the active mine to compare with those plans. It's known that different companies have different agendas and different methods of operation. When a mine is sold, the township may wish to restart the conditional use permit process so that the new operator underst- understands regulations and the values of the commit, community. Because mining is such a dynamic process with broad and permanent and often quick impact on the landscape and environment, township may wish to follow the State of Ohio, specifically the Division of Mineral Resources Management in creating an annual, excuse me, an annual review process. Questions the zoning commission has, has raised include, what authority does the township have in these areas and what tools of enforcement are permitted in the ORC? What are the opinions and values of the residents? Do we know that, that new mine operators have read the Article Forty-five regulations? We can't assume that and plan to follow them. How can we verify the new owners have done so? Should the township be notified when, when mines are sold? What kind of periodic permit system would the township want, if any? There are violations of township regulations with current mining activity. Our zoning enforcement is mostly complaint driven. What's the best method for resolving violations of zoning by mine operators? Does the township have authority to require performance bonds of mine operators? Our resolution gives small solar farm owners just a few months to clean up a defunct site. Our resolution in Article Forty-five gives mine operators three years to reclaim the land. Did this discrepancy be addressed? We have many other questions. In conclusion, it took the zoning commission twelve months to research, originate, and go through hearings, provisions, more hearings, get legal counsel from the county and others, and submit our small solar farm regulations to the trustees. It will likely take at least six months, probably more uh, to update Article Forty-five, uh, after similar steps would be taken. Uh, that's, that's essentially the questions and argument that I have for, uh, asking you to consider a moratorium on, uh, that expanded mining for right now.
So I guess the first question was, did you consult with?
I did. And she said it is in the hands of the trustees. You have the authority to do that.
So what I found, and actually found just this afternoon, this was in the entire Ohio Township News, May-June, twenty twenty-three, bulletin, I guess. It was talking about House Bill Twenty-three, which I didn't really know anything about. It says, lastly, House, House Bill Twenty-three requires a township to allow aggregate mineral surface mining in any zoning district that's either a committed use or a conditional use. Where the Board of Zoning Appeals, when those, those activities are to be added to existing mine preparation. So that basically tells me, you know, what do we have, uh, authority to?
Mm-hmm. Right.
You did not know about that. So.
What was the date on that?
It's, it's the Ohio Township News, May-June, twenty twenty. So is it here? It's been a year ago. So. So I think it's probably something we should talk to her about.
Sure.
Again, uh, so basically talking about, you know, it's really going to be on the zoning to rewrite this. The article.
Sure. And, and where was that? What article was in the ORC? Is that citing?
Uh, HB twenty-three was the law that was signed.
HB twenty, so that would be, and it would be from the twenty, twenty twenty-three.
Practice. Yeah, not the current.
Yeah, HB twenty.
Under, what is that, hundred and seventy-fourth, seventy, whatever is that number?
Twenty-three, HB.
HB twenty-three. So what I did, I just got in the OTA website and go, you, which you can do because you're the only one that's actually ever, uh, sign in, go to the Resource Center. And then I just put in moratorium for mineral, mineral extraction. It's several articles, and this, I think, is seven. So. Okay, the hundred and thirty-first general template. It's House Bill Twenty-three. All you have to do is just Google.
Okay. Do you mind quoting that again, what, what you took out?
I'm going to read it again.
Yeah, if you. Yeah, if you wouldn't like.
Lastly, HB twenty three requires a township to allow aggregate mineral surface mining in any zoning district, either as a committed use or a conditional use with Board of Zoning Appeals when those activities are to be added to an existing mining operation. Is basically what that's what I was trying to do. So I, I, I think before we, we do anything, check with, look at that and check with the news.
Okay, yeah. All right. Get her opinion on it.
The people that want the mining had a big lobbyist that got that through because it even says that the OTA sent Governor Dewan a request to line item veto this provision. However, he signed the bill as passed by the General Assembly. So the.
Well, so that doesn't that bring into question our whole effort last year where we put it into industrial zone only?
Well, no, this, this didn't have anything to do with the uh, the solar. This just has the, the mining.
Oh, true, yeah.
So again, since it's really no big rush, obviously, I would say check, check with her. She would see what she says.
See what she says, get back to you next meeting.
I think that's the best.
Sure.
Yeah, but she's, if she's gives us the all clear, I have no issue doing that, putting a moratorium on. Just make sure legally covered.
Yeah, sure, sure, that's. Any word on that at all?
No, really can't say last time I care what they talk about.
Yeah, I would, yeah, if you'd had any word on it, though, so, no. Good.
All right, well, appreciate you getting the app and stuff.
Okay, anybody else, anybody else have any comments or anything?
My little question on House Bill twenty three, I mean, it gives a grammar of continuing a mine, what was it?
Okay, you're going to speak, please come up and name it, Andrew.
Jim Martin, six nine one six, Shimp Road. I, I listened to House Bill twenty three, spent some time thinking through this. Um, obviously, we've listened to the people of the township with the solar, prime agricultural land is important. Um, obviously, mining is much more educationist ground than, than solar is. I mean, if you dig a hole that's two hundred feet deep, we're never going to fill it up again. So listening to the people that we've heard, obviously, it's an important thing that we're talking about. Um, my question is, where can we find more efficient House Bill twenty three if it lines out that it's the continuation of a mine? Is it across the city, a continuation of a mine? What is a continuation of a mine? Because it could be very broad, right? We're not talking across the street, it could be across double county. So I guess that's, that's my thing is we'll, we'll just go research.
Yeah, you know, you know, research again, and then maybe able to get some idea. Yeah, it's a good point.
Right, nice. The situation sounds pretty broad.
Pretty broad, yeah. Anything else? Okay, we'll kind of table it and see what happens. Where? Appreciate guys hanging around, we're going to go into executive session, you know, so.
But you probably will take action.
Yes, yep.
So. So are we ready to do that?
No, I got that.
Oh, you've got it too, okay.
So I move to go into executive session for ORC one two one point two two G G seven to consider the compensation of a public employee.
It's G one.
Is it still G one again?
G one.
For ORC one two one point two two G one uh, to consider the compensation of a public employee. Mr. Easton, may I have a roll call?
You need a second? Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
We're in executive session at eight thirteen.
And please bring uh, Chief Burchett, join us in the executive session.
You want me in there too?
Yes, yeah, you were just.